Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order for the City Council Monday, August 1st, 2022, and we'd like to begin with prayer tonight. Alderman, would you lead us in prayer?
Gracious Father, we come once again, first of all, saying thank you, Lord. We thank you for allowing us to be here today to discuss city business, Lord. We pray right now, as we conduct your business, Lord, that all minds will come together so that we can continue this city to prosper. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our mayor. We thank you for the City Council, Lord. And then, Lord, we want to put a special prayer right now for Vincent Petty, who just was shot the other day, Lord. We pray that he'll continue to heal. And, Lord, we just pray that we'll continue to fight against this violence that's going on in our city right now, Lord. We pray that we will put the proper people in the right places to change mindset, so, Heavenly Father, that we can get to the root of the problems that's going on in our city, Lord. Again, we need to find out family dynamics to do the right things to help, to bring this problem to cease. And then, Lord, we just pray that as we continue to do your business, Lord, that we'll just keep you first in everything we do. In Jesus' name, amen.
City Council will lead us in pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
At this time, we will have a public comment. And please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal attacks upon the council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussion of matters which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. First up, we have Mr. Larry Enns.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Larry Enns, a resident of the South Side of Kankakee, a longtime resident. I'm here to represent the homeowners of the South Side. I brought with me a petition with 95 homeowners' signatures requesting that you, as representatives, do not allow a change in the zoning for a homeless shelter at 1284 South 4th. While there may be a need for this, this is the wrong location. Mostly, single-family homes in this area. This location is also not close to the services that Fortitude in the past said they needed to be close to. Thank you for your valuable time allowing me to speak. If any one of you would like to speak to me later on, you're welcome to call me. I'm available anytime. Thank you very much. Who do I present these petitions to?
If you bring them to the clerk, she'll make sure they get...
You may add your pro-
Yes, you may. Make sure we get those to the proper people. Thank you. Next, we will move into item five, and that's roll call. City Council?
Brown. Jones.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Cobb.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Navarez.
Here.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson.
Here.
Crawford. Ossenga. O'Brien. Barron. Malone Marshall.
Present.
Prude. 14 present, zero absent.
We have a quorum. Next roll call. Department units?
Casswater. LaRoe. Kugel. Sanchi.
Here.
Jay. Pigash.
Present.
Nelson. Bertrand.
Present.
Hoffman.
Present.
Roswell. Brewer Watson. Thank you.
Okay. Two things tonight. We do have a resolution honoring Captain Casa Grande. I'd like to move that up into Communications under item eight. And additionally, we also have, under Communications, A, B, C, D, and E. It's the consent of the council to combine all those items tonight.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
So we have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. We have a second from Alderman Marzak to combine items A, B, C, D, and E, and move item 8A to 8F. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call?
Brown. Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb. Lewis. Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford. Ossenga. O'Brien. Barron. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude. 14 ayes, zero nays.
Next is item six. The minutes from Monday, July 18th, 2022. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Ossenga. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderman Crawford. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions to the minutes from Monday, July 18th, 2022? Seeing none. Roll call?
Brown. Jones. Johnson. Cobb. Lewis. Navarez. Marzak. Swanson. Crawford. Ossenga. O'Brien. Barron. Malone Marshall. Prude. 14 ayes, zero nays.
Minutes are passed. Next is item seven, petitions. Item eight?
PB 2022-6-2, an ordinance rezoning certain property located within the city of Kankakee, Kankakee County, Illinois, from its current zoning classification of R1, single-family residential, to a new zoning classification of R2, two-family residential, at 346 South 4th Avenue in Kankakee.
Mr. Hoffman, before we get into it, would you like to give a little background on this?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. So this property has been, actually, for a while, it was a four-unit, as I understand it. When the current buyer purchased it, it was a four-unit. They converted it back down to a two-unit, but the property is actually zoned R1, single-family. So the current owner wants to look at, perhaps, selling the property at some point in time. As we've heard with multiple other cases, that's a challenge when you've got a two-unit and it's zoned, single-family. So they've requested to rezone it to R2 to be consistent with the current use of the property. And they also requested a number of variances to help bring the building into conformance with the lot standards. This is only a 25-foot wide lot, so it's smaller than our typical lot in the community. So they needed variances from front yard and area requirements and side yard setbacks. The planning board was comfortable with all those variances and granted those variances. They've also recommended to you that the property be rezoned to R2. My only additional comment to that would be that there are a number of other two-unit buildings in this general area. Eventually, I think we need to come back and address that. We've actually identified and mapped where those are, but we'll want to come back in the future and probably do a rezoning in this part of the community, I think, to make it all consistent, rather than creating this one spot of R2 here. Create some zoning that fits the entire area would be the most appropriate. But for now, to let them proceed, the recommendation is to rezone this piece to R2.
Is there a motion to place this, the suspended rules for the passage of this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
We have an ordinance. We have a motion from Alderman Navarez?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Roll call?
Brown. Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb. Lewis. Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson. Crawford. Ossenga. O'Brien. Barron.
Staying due to a conflict of interest.
Malone Marshall. Prude. 13 ayes, zero nays, one extension.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final passage?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call?
Brown. Jones. Johnson. Cobb. Lewis. Navarez. Marzak. Swanson. Crawford. Ossenga. O'Brien. Barron. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude. 13 ayes, zero nays, one extension.
Ordinance passes. Next is item eight, and we have item A, B, C, D, and E as a combined. Would you like to read those, clerk?
Yep. Item A is Kankakee Development Corporation is requesting street closure of the 200 block of South Skyler Avenue to host Sunset Stroll on Friday, September 2nd, 2022, from 4:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. B is Still I Rise is requesting property rental of the Hillside Stage area to host their Back-to-School Bash on Saturday, August 20th, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. Item C, Pleasant Grove Missionary Baptist Church is requesting permission to host their Community Outreach Parade on Saturday, August 13th, 2022, at 11:00 a.m. Item D, B5 Star Foundation is requesting permission to host their Peace Walk on Saturday, August 13th, 2022, from 12:00 p.m. until 2:00 p.m. And item E, Hippocrates Medical Clinic, is requesting street closure of the 100 block of South Chicago Avenue to host their Back-to-School Health Fair on Saturday, August 6th, 2022, from 8:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve these closures and requests? We have a motion from Alderman Prude. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call?
Brown. Jones.
Aye.
Johnson. Cobb. Lewis. Navarez. Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson. Crawford. Ossenga. O'Brien. Barron. Malone Marshall. Prude. 14 ayes, zero nays.
Next is item 8F. That is item 13A that we need.
A resolution honoring Captain Michael D. Casa Grande for his distinguished service to the city of Kankakee.
Can Chief LaRoech and Captain Casa Grande, along with his family, approach?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you all for coming to honor Mike, people he's worked with for the last 32 years. Some of us, actually, not so long. Mike has had a long distinguished career with Kankakee Fire Department. Started, gee, I'm sorry, can't get this right here, Mike. Started with the fire department December 19th, 1990. Finished up his career this past Friday, July 29th, was his last official day. And he's had a lot of good days, and hopefully, not too many bad ones. Mike, you've been very instrumental in saving our citizens and doing really good things for the fire department and for the city. I want to recognize you for doing, going above and beyond every day, and we appreciate the time you've served with us. Thank you.
I'm going to read the resolution honoring Captain Michael Casa Grande for his distinguished service to the city of Kankakee. Whereas, Captain Michael D. Casa Grande is a very respected firefighter and United States Air Force veteran, who has rendered faithful, conscientious, and valuable service for the past 45 years. And whereas, Captain Casa Grande began his career at 17 as a volunteer firefighter for the Manhattan Fire Protection District. He then enlisted in the Air Force, where he served as a fire protection specialist for 10 years. He was awarded the prestigious Air Force Performance Award two years in a row. And whereas, Captain Casa Grande is dedicated to the Kankakee firefighting community, he began his career with the Kankakee Fire Department in 1990, where he rose through the ranks, beginning as a firefighter paramedic, then lieutenant, arson investigator, and finally, captain and director of fire prevention. As an arson investigator, he was instrumental in the arrest and conviction of numerous arsonists. As the director of fire prevention, he served with distinction, earning the admiration of his colleagues, as well as business owners and the citizens of Kankakee. And whereas, during his illustrious tenure, Captain Casa Grande served with loyalty, honor, and distinction, and was governed by a keen sense of duty. Throughout the years, he received multiple awards for his devoted service. Such awards included the Life Safety and Meritorious Awards from the Kankakee Fire Department for rescuing a fire victim and helping Harbor House get a sprinkler and fire alarm system. In 2017, he was presented with the American Red Cross Hero Award, which recognizes community heroes for helping people prevent, prepare, and respond to emergencies. Whereas, Captain Casa Grande significantly contributed to the youth of our community by volunteering with the Boy Scouts of America as a leader and scout master for 15 years. He has served and will continue to serve as fire marshal for the national and world jamborees of Boy Scouts. Therefore, be it resolved by Mayor Christopher W. Curtis and the City Council of the City of Kankakee, Illinois, do hereby deem it an honor to recognize Captain Michael Casa Grande's contribution to the city of Kankakee, and express their appreciation and gratitude for the years of service that he has given to make our city a better place to live in. His dedication to the Kankakee community is a legacy which will remain long beyond this day, adopted this first day of August 2022.
Is there a motion accepting this resolution? We'll take that as unanimous, yes. Unanimated second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Captain. We'll let Captain speak. Hopefully, he'll have a few words for us. I would also like to express my sincere gratitude. We've only been together, basically, for about 12, 14 months now. You have done outstanding efforts in so many different aspects of making my job easier, from the Fire Prevention Bureau, from helping with code issues, to just helping to run the day-to-day of the fire department. And for that, we are forever grateful for everything that you've done. We wish you everything in your future endeavors. We know you've got a lot of life in you, and I don't think you're going to quite retire yet, maybe, or I don't know. Maybe your family will get you to come home a little bit more, so. But we thank you for that, and I just, I kind of want to make a special recognition. Captain Casa Grande sits on the scouting, and a lot of times, he's involved with the Eagle Scouts promotions. And so I've been very fortunate that I've had two sons come up from the scouting ranks and achieve Eagle status, and he was in on one of the interviews there, and has been instrumental in that. So I'm forever thankful for guiding them down their path. So, thank you. Can we hear a few words you'd like to say?
First of all, I'd like to thank, actually, my family for putting up with me in the fire service. It's a lot of times that you're away from home, and for the first half of my career, spent a lot of time away from home and different family events. So to them, I owe a lot. The rest of you, you know, I can't do my job without you guys. Every day, you guys go out there and you represent the city and actually do a phenomenal job. When I started here, things were a lot differently, a little sketchy at times, but the growth of this department, from the leadership and the people behind it, the administration, has made a significant difference in this community. And it wouldn't be without everybody's participation, working together, that we've seen the changes. I mean, we've went through some times where things weren't so great. And I remember when I got here, somebody told me, "Why did you come to Kankakee?" I told them, "I saw great potential in the city." And I still believe in that great potential. I still think that there's a lot more to do. There's a lot more things that are going to be accomplished, and there's a lot of things that are being accomplished now. So thank you for my opportunity of being a part of it.
Next on the agenda is item nine, standing committees. Item A is Building and Code from Thursday, April 21st, 2022. Alderwoman Malone Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor. Building Code Committee meeting on April the 21st. We had a quorum. We discussed our bills. Well, we approved our bills for March, and we also discussed the Solid Waste Chapter 16, and we covered Article 1, sections 1 through 4. Our new business was insurance required for rental properties, and our in-house counsel, Norrell, provided us amendment to the language for Chapter 8 on building and regulations. But further discussion is going to be required for that because we want to kind of look into what type of insurance is required, and in-house Norrell is taking care of that, so we'll have further discussion on that. We also discussed the new business walkthroughs, and so far, it's been going well because Code and ECDA are working together on that. Alderman Barron inquired about code staffing, and so we're getting a total of six now, building, not building inspections, but property inspectors. And Alderwoman Johnson was inquiring about how to report food trucks that are operating without solicitor license, and so the committee was informed that you are to report that to the city clerk because it's a business license issue. Also, Alderman Marzak inquired about the availability of dumpsters for each ward, and the committee discussed having a fall cleanup, citywide cleanup, so that we can be sure that we have enough dumpsters just in case a flood, and knock on wood, we don't want it. Also, in-house counsel, Norrell, will be scheduling an insurance agent for a future meeting. Our meeting was adjourned at 6:50 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. We also have item B, Building and Code from Thursday, June 16th, 2022. And Alderwoman Malone Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor. We held our June 16th meeting for Building Code and Enforcement. We did have a quorum present, and we approved it, and it's for April, and also the bills for April end date. We continued our discussion on solid waste chapter 16, and we discussed section, Article 1, section 4 through 8. Also, in our new business, we discussed the garbage cans that are not going to move from the curb, that the garbage pick up, and the difficulty that it's hard for the residents that are trying to do the hours, and we discussed their enforcement of the way they move code for the curbs and door hangers. Before issuing citations. We also discussed the tenant landlord responsibility regarding trash code violations and the current fee schedule, and the citywide litter concerns. We discussed requiring landlords to include in their lease agreements that the trash ordinance and the tenants may abide, must abide by, and be responsible for the fines. We discussed the presentation from Peoria when their code department came and did a presentation to us. And also, Alderman Marzak was requesting that we invite the landlord association to our, one of our meetings, so they can give us some input. Alderwoman Johnson complimented the professionalism of our current code staff. We adjourned at 6:30 p.m.
Thank you. Item C, Economic and Development, from Thursday, July 14th, 2022. Alderman Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. The regular meeting in the Economic Development Committee was called to order on July 14th, 5:30 in the council chambers. There was a quorum present. There were guests, the following guests were present. St. Mary's Hospital Representative Doug Jones, Behavior Health Network Karen Gallagher, Hospital Administrator Kathy Peterson. Mr. Jones, Ms. Gallagher, and Ms. Peterson, who provided a report on St. Mary's request for appropriation of $895,000, $860.78 for their emergency renovations. Ms. Peterson reported that St. Mary has already commenced its nine-phase, $2.2 million project to improve its emergency room. Director Brill Watson gave her executive directive report, updated us on the Jeffers Company and Clinery. I got it right. But we also were updated on the outdoor dining. Open discussion regarding a program for certain city-owned vacant residential parcels and city-owned improvement were proposed by, indicated that he wanted council members to have an opportunity to inspect the list and ensure that it aligns with development and goals. On a motion, Alderwoman Malone Marshall, and second by Alderwoman Lewis, the committee voted unanimously on roll call vote to request that the full council table and send back to the committee the city-owned vacant lot property program proposed for further review of the approval process and wording. Meeting adjourned at 7:18 p.m., and more details of discussions at that meeting are available on the city's website.
Thank you, Alderman Cobb. Next, we'll move on to item 10, and Report of Officers. Item A?
City of Kankakee bills on the amount of $711,524.42.
Is there a motion for the approval of the report of officers for the city of Kankakee?
I'll make that motion, Mayor, to approve the report of officers. Place the money in the proper account, pay the bills in the amount of $711,524.42. We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
We have a second from Alderman Ossenga. Is there any questions or comments about the bills? Seeing none. Roll call?
Brown. Jones. Johnson. Cobb. Lewis.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Osenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
I'd like to abstain as three checks to Piggish Engineering. That's seven, nine, six, four, eight, three, two, nine, eight, and one, three, one, three.
Thank you. Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prue?
Aye.
Fourteen, nine, zero, nays.
Report of officers for the city of Kenke are approved. Next is item B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills on the amount of $889,818.67.
Is there a motion for the approval of the report of officers for environmental services utility?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson, is there a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Osinga. Is there any questions, questions or comments about the bills for August 1st for environmental services utility? Seeing none, roll call?
Brown?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Osenga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
I'd like to abstain as to check three, two, two, six, zero to Gordon Electric Supply to vote out.
Thank you. Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Prue?
Aye.
Fourteen, ayes, zero, nays.
Report of officers for environmental services utility are approved. Next, we're going to item 11, unfinished business, and we have items A and B are still listed as they were tabled at the last meeting. Any reaction from the council at this time, or comments?
Mayor, during our economic development meeting, there were some things about some of the wordings that we found within the ordinance that we'd like to take another look at, and ask that we continue to table this, and we should be ready by the next, after the next economic development meeting, to understand the impact that it has on the city.
We have item 11C.
An ordinance amending chapter two, administration, Article 10, municipal purchasing, and Article 13, comptroller, section two dash one eight eight, powers and duties generally of the Kenke Key Municipal Code. It's a second reading.
If you remember at the last council meeting, Attorney Jeff Taylor talked about this, is cleaning up some stuff from back about 20 years ago, and getting the proper wording and for allocation of bidding and spending, and that's all been put together there. So, we're looking for a motion for approval tonight.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We got a motion from Alderwoman Swanson, and we have a second from Alderman Marzak. Is there any questions or comments regarding this ordinance? Alderwoman Malone Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I wanted to just state that I noticed on the house cleaning that it did explain a lot of the changes that was made in this ordinance that hadn't been previously made, and how they went from $5,000 and the $10,000 was not done. But then with the addition of the mayor's spending, I just feel like that's a sketchy area, and I would not like to see that not happen as far as the spending on the mayor be $25,000. I could see the comptroller with the $5,000, and possibly the mayor with the $5,000, but $25,000, I think that would open to the door to a lot of cronyism and other things that we don't wanna see with this city administration.
We did, we did put the comptroller in there in case for some reason, if the mayor was incapacitated or something unavailable, that if it was an emergency, she could do something there. If you do read in the ordinance, it does talk about that my authorization is only anything that is budgeted, and still requires a committee chair and a comptroller to sign off on anything that's already been previously budgeted. If it's not within the budget, then it does have to come to city council. So, I think before, we've kinda always worked off the $20,000 limit. The state statute's 25, they've been raising it up every so often. I think townships have gone to 30 now, but that was basically just matching it up with the state statute going there, so. But that was the reason behind it. Yes, Alderwoman Malone Marshall, yes.
But with that, with that being, that's for the putting out for bid, right? And 30,000 is for putting items out, or?
Anything up to, yeah, so anything above $25,000 has to go out for bid. Anything below $25,000 can just be done by the council without bidding. So, if the council was looking to buy, I don't know, put a new roof on a building for, that was a cost of $19,000, that could just be acted on by the council without having to go out to bid. If a new roof was gonna be 35,000, the city administration has to go out for bid.
But then with the mayor, with the new, it's, that would allow you to do anything up to 25,000 without our consent, without our prior consent?
As long as it's a budgeted line item, as long as it's a budgeted line item. So if it's not in the budget, I can't go ahead and just say I've gotta go purchase something. But it would, what it does allow is, a good example would be if the fire truck, under maintenance, has a category of, I'm just gonna use a number because I don't know off the top of my head, but they have $50,000 in their budget for repairs on the fire truck, and a tire blows, and they need two new tires, and those cost, you know, $9,000 apiece because they're big ones or something of that nature, or they have a hydraulic pump that goes out, the authorization, as long as it's in the budgets, the mayor could just, Chief LaRoche could call, say we need to spend $18,000 to get the hydraulic pump, or two new tires on the truck fixed, I call the public chair and comptroller, make sure that it's in the budget properly, and then it's authorized. Now, that bill still would come back to the city council for approval, but it doesn't authorize. Previously, I think all administrations have been working up to 20,000 previously. This raises it up to 25, following the state statute, because I believe it was in 2019, the state raised the minimum from 20,000 to 25,000.
Right here, though, right? This was never in our?
Previously, the, previously the mayor had authorization up to 20,000. That was the understanding, because we thought the 20,000 was the threshold.
Where did that come from? I'm trying to find out where?
Well, if you're looking there, the problem we had was there was that skip from 5,000 to 10,000. But if you look, at one point, they raised it from 2,500 to 5,000, and then it went up to 10,000, and then there was another piece in there that raised it to 20,000. The concern was, is there was a skip back in the early 2000s from 5,000 to 10,000, so we're correcting those ordinance line ends. But up till today, the, basically what we've been working off the old ordinance was the mayor had the capacity up to $20,000.
On what?
On any expenditure that might be needed. So, it talks about, in reference to section, this is whereas, under air in sections two dash one four four, two dash one four six, two dash one four seven, and two dash one four nine of Kenke City Code ordinance, 2006-02 was supposed to amend these sections to read $20,000 in every instant in which the sum of $10,000 was mentioned. The language of each of these above-mentioned sections was not amended to replace the $10,000 with $20,000, as the current Kenke City Code reads the minimum level at which competitive bids will be required is 5,000. So up along, we've always been, past administrations for the last 20 years have been working off the $20,000 threshold. However, if you read it, it was, there was a skip back at the $5,000 mark back in 20, like 2002 or 2003, and that's what's amending that to make it proper. The only thing we did change is we did move it from 20,000 to 25,000 to follow the state statute. Alderman Crawford?
Thank you, Mayor. So basically, in this order, we're gonna add that.
It is raising it $5,000 from the old administrations that were working off 20,000. It's raising it to the state statute that was moved up in 2019 from 20,000 to 25,000. Alderman Baron?
All right. I think the proportion that Alderman and Malone Marshall, I decided that we're all, this is the section six, the average clause of the ordinance, that's the section two, one four? Or nine point two, expenditures of funds by mayor. That, that appears to be, that's a new provision that would be added to the code. It's not amending something, it's adding something. My, my question about that, based upon something? Here does authorize the mayor to make purchases up to 25,000 dollars without the mayor authorization to the council. There's not language in here that limits it to being already approved in a way that it did previous section, the section two, one four nine point one. So immediately above that and more than that, there is what it says, having previously been approved in Kenke, what does the city? And that, that gathers it to some of the argument that the budget is essential, essentially, there is a scene. But that, that next provision, which appears to be new, doesn't have that category, which is the only thing that happened, approved that is in the law. So that, that was a question of mine, my opinion, because if that seems to, that's a thing to, without it having?
So it requires the comptroller's signature, but does not require the committee chair's person, correct?
Yeah. That's currently grounded. This, so this is on page 10 of the ordinance at the bottom of the document. So, the mayor's authority to contract $20,000 to the mayor's organization, but then requires the council signs, and the mayor can do it without that co-sign from the council. And then required reporting to the city council at the next meeting.
Is there a number that you prefer, different?
I'm sorry, I've got my microphone. Yeah, so this is on, the bottom of page 10 of the ordinance, section six, creates a new section, two dash one forty-nine point two. Subpart A authorizes the mayor to make purchases and enter into contracts not to exceed $25,000 without preliminary authorization. Section B says that if the mayor expends funds under this section, the mayor has to sign the agreement, and so does the comptroller, so you don't have the mayor signing those by himself. The next section requires the mayor to report any expenditures under this section to the city council at the next, immediately next section, and that that report be entered into the minutes. And then the next section is a savings clause, it says it has to be in accordance with the law. So this section doesn't require it to be a budgeted line item, as opposed to the prior one, which does.
State statute's 25,000. Alderman Baron?
My preference, my recommendation would be to add the, having previously, having previously been approved in the annual budget of the city, to that section two, one four nine point two, so it is consistent in those two provisions. Without it, it seems that one four nine point two could be, it makes, it makes one four nine point one kinda superfluous. You don't need to have budgetary authority with that second provision.
So, what we're trying to accomplish here is, oh, sorry, Alderman Brown?
People already located in the two, uh, ordinance above that, and the language that Alderman just said, we need these things, we write them, write them back to council. That way, all the language is cleaned up and we're done with it.
So what is the?
Going back and forth on this language in the state statute. I know we've been going a long time on the state statute, everything up to 20, over $20,000 had to be, had to be bided out, whether it was in the ordinance or not, I mean, that's the way it was. But, if we're gonna do this language, let's do it right. Can we just put it in light, and we just table this, bring it back, the nature of the council?
We just, we just need what you're looking for. As I said, previous administrations had been working off the 20,000 mark, but as we reviewed it, as I looked at it and brought legal into it, I read it, it said, "I don't think it's 20,000, because I think we've been doing it wrong for the last 10 years." So that's why I sat there and said that we need to correct it back from 2002 when they skipped that, that carryover, so. But, whatever you guys are looking for, I just wanna get the documentation correct so we're doing things properly, that's all I'm looking to do. Alderwoman Swanson?
Having been the person making the motion, could we go ahead and proceed with this, with an amendment to make sure that it is worded that it needs to be a budgeted item? Would that be?
Can it be done?
Would that be okay with everybody?
You can make an amendment to your motion if you wish.
Yes, to go ahead with, with item C, but within that to amend it to say that the item needs to be a budgeted item.
I'll second it.
Clarification, that's not as to the emergency use of the towers, it's only as to the, the 25,000 for non-emergencies, right? Non-emergency use does not need to be a line item.
No, the emergency is, quite frankly, what we have that in there, and I don't even think it's, quite frankly, high enough, but if a tornado came to the city of Kenke, we can call a special meeting, but that might not happen for 48 hours. We have to have the ability to tell Chief LaRoche or Chief Passwater, you know what, go buy those 72 generators or whatever you need to do to get the city back up and running as quickly as possible, that's the emergency power, so. Now, at the time, the mayor has the right to call an emergency declaration, which we would do as quick as possible, and then report everything back. But that's basically what that's in there for. Heaven forbid, we, hopefully, we never have to use that. I don't wanna use it ever in my turn.
But if you have the, excuse me?
Yes, Alderman Jones?
Yes, sir, thank you, man. So, but you will have the authority, because we don't wanna be in no situation where if we do have that, and you have to spend five, $10,000, you can, you got the authority to do it?
If there's an emergency situation, it's actually up to $50,000.
It's up to 50,000?
$50,000 to help end an emergency without, you have to report it back to city council.
No, I get it, I get it.
I, I use tornado often, because that can do enough damage in a town to have something to be done, but. So there's, we have an amendment, we have a motion, Alderman Swanson amended? So, we have another question, who was it? So, so Alderwoman Swanson asked to amend that the language be added, that it has to be a budgeted item, correct?
And that's under section, just to clarify, that's section six of the ordinance, and specifically the proposed new section, two dash one forty-nine point two, subpart A.
We also, we also need to put this chair out, the chair in it too, that?
And the chair in addition, to sign in addition to the comptroller?
Yeah.
Right.
We had all that in it too, or we did that? Well, that's his head, huh?
So my question is this, is our department heads, they have the ability now, pretty much. It's budgeted, I mean, Chief LaRoche, if he's got it in his budget, I'm assuming, so. Whatever, quite frankly, whatever the council wants, we just gotta get the ordinance correct, so we are doing things the proper way.
The request is coming from the department, so the department had the mayor and comptroller are all involved in. And then it comes back before us, also for our approval after?
You approved the bills, yeah.
Yeah, when we approved the bill.
I guess a good example would be, I'm just, I was trying to think of a good example. So, community promotions. Community promotions has $37,000 line item. We'll just, we'll call it up there. Does, basically, it does allow, that's a budgeted line item. The mayor could go in there and authorize something to spend $14,000 on a community promotion line item, because it's a budgeted item. That would be a good example.
There's a lot of good emergency examples that I think that, you know?
So we have a motion, we have the, correct, where the amendment's at? I think we need to get that clear.
So, the initial amendment to the motion was to include the requirement that it be a budgeted line item. The question then was, are we also including the requirement that the chairman sign off on the expense, the chairman of the relevant entity? And so the question is, is that part of the amendment?
No. Just to go with it, being a budgeted item with the comptroller mayor is what my motion is.
Do you, do you amend your second, Mr. Alderman Marzak?
If you want the chair, I mean, if everybody wants the chairman of the committee to sign it, really doesn't even make that much difference, like, in case of something going wrong, it's just another leg, that you have to, another step that you have to do to get something done.
I know there's a motion on the floor, but is that, is that what we're really looking for? Is a, is the chair to be included as well?
Is, is the chair to be included as well? No?
No.
Okay.
Let's just leave my, can I just leave my motion with the amendment to make sure it's a budgeted item? That's my motion.
Stand.
You were the second, Alderman Marzak, do you amend, you second the amended motion?
Yes.
Additional questions and comments? Roll call?
Brown. Jones. Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Pass.
Navarez.
Yes.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
No.
Prue. Brown. Lewis. Eleven ayes, three nays.
Or, ordinance passes with the amendment. So we will make that correction and get that out to everybody. Next is item twelve, new business, item A.
An ordinance amending chapter thirty-two, section two thirty-one, entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee. Handicap parking signs established at two fifteen South Sibley Avenue.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of order?
Motion to suspend the rule that needs to be passed of this order.
We have a motion from Alderman Brown, is there a second? We have a second from Alderman Jones. Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb. Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this item on final reading for passage?
Motion to put this order on final pass and pass.
We have a motion from Alderman Brown, is there a second? About a second. We have a second from Alderman Jones. Any questions or comments? Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford. Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien. Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue. Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay, ordinance passage. Next is item twelve B.
An ordinance amending chapter thirty-two, section two thirty-one, entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee. Handicap parking signs established at five thirty-three South Osborne Avenue.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules? We have a motion from Alderman O'Brien. We have a second from Alderman Baron. Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb. Lewis. Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford. Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue. Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage? We have a motion from Alderman O'Brien, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Baron, is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford. Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien. Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue. Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay, ordinance passage. Next is item thirteen B.
A resolution ratifying the approval of an extended term master power supply agreement between the City of Kankakee and MC Squared Energy Services LLC.
So this is our aggregation that we have with our city residents. We go through this every two or three years. We have three different agreements that we use. This has to do with the residents and their electrical service power. Right now, electric service is quite high. This locks in the rate for a two-year period at, I believe, nine point six cents. A lot of rates out there are about eleven cents or above. So it's still a high number, but that's where the rates are these days. It does lock it in at a lower rate than some of the other out there. It also, part of this agreement is they do pay a fee to the City of Kankakee, an amount of twelve thousand dollars in a lump sum. This had to be, in order to execute this, we had kind of like some of our past aggregation agreements that we've done with Ms. Hall. There's a timeline, so this had to be done last week, so in order to meet that locked rate, so I did execute the document. We're bringing it back to council as ratification that I did enter into that agreement to keep us in the system for the aggregation for the community residents, so. So we're looking for a motion to accept this resolution of ratifying the agreement with MC Squared, who we've been utilizing for the last several years, for a two-year commitment.
So move, ma'am.
We have a motion from Alderman Osenga.
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Is there any questions or comments? Alderman Crawford.
Yes, thank you, mayor. We've had quite a few in third ward, I don't know if any of the other ward have had it, but they're trying to get your constituents to jump over. So thanks for giving us information at the ninety point six percent, because I know the ones that are on the west side, they're trying to get people to jump over for, I think it's ten point, so this is still quite a bit low and then like the people are trying to get people to jump over.
And the, the letter should be going out to the people that are involved at the program already. They should be getting a letter in the mail, so.
I received mine today.
Did it come out today? Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? Alderman Brown.
I have the letter coming out from the council.
Yes. To the residents that are signed up through the aggregation program. So if you're still on ComEd or whatever, you won't get a letter, but if you are through MC Squared, like I looked at one of my bills, it's through MC Squared, you should get a letter from them explaining what's going on. But only to, I think about, if I remember correctly, about twenty or twenty-five percent of our residents have signed up for that. Everybody else is probably with their other program or they might be on with ComEd or whatever, they won't get a letter. Just the people that are signed up with it. Alderman Crawford.
Now, we don't have any, I'm sorry, anything that has, because I know this company that's been out walking around and trying to get you also to jump over into their gas bill, to their gas, and the terms that they're trying to get you to jump over to now is eighty-two cents. So you might want to look into it, that eighty-two cents is a lot cheaper right now than what we're paying for a term, paying a dollar twenty-seven a term. And it's probably have to be close to two dollars a term by absolute.
Right now we have.
They had on the electric, but they're good on the gas.
So right now we have three electrical, we have one for our city lights, we have one for Stone Street, and we have one for the residents. Fortunately, the one that we're in with the lights and the one with Stone Street are pretty good numbers. I believe our city lights are at about two point nine, so it's really low. And Stone Street, we locked in last, last year at about five point nine, so those fortunately are to our advantage right now. Any other questions? Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford. Osenga. O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue. Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay, resolution passes. Next is item thirteen C.
Resolution authorizing the execution of the Kankakee Events Partnership Memorandum of Understanding.
So what this is, is if you're not familiar, the Kankakee Events Partnership, there's really been no written document. This is just a kind of, it's the Kankakee Public Library, it's the City of Kankakee, and it's the Kankakee Development Corporation. So there's several agreements, if you look in there of what the library works on, different things, including things like Music Fest, the Sunset Stroll, other items. Basically, it's talking about, there was nothing ever put in writing. It can, this contract can be broken by any party on thirty-day notice. But basically, it's just a memorandum of understanding that all three entities work together. Kankakee Development Corporation contributes money towards the Music, Merchant Street Music Fest, and so does the City of Kankakee. Public Works does all the work for setup of that, they help with the other events. The Libraries does a lot of the staffing to put all this, all these event, not a lot, they basically do all the staffing to put these events together. And then Kankakee Development Corporation helps with some financial resources and some staffing also. So this is a, just a memorandum of understanding. This came from a request of the Library and Kankakee Development Corporation to make sure. We just had something in writing in the files for everywhere. Kind of a, I'll, I'll look at Director Bertrand as he's nearing his countdown on days. Kind of one of the thought, one of the thoughts was make sure things are in the proper place and the proper channels as he eyes retirement. And whoever comes in that seat next has an understanding of how the things move forward within the library, so. So we're looking for a motion to accept the resolution, accepting this, accepting this memorandum of understanding between the three parties.
So move, ma'am.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb, is there a second? We have a second from Alderwoman Swanson, any questions about it? Seeing none, roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Upstain.
Johnson.
Aye.
Crawford. Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien. Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one of the tensions.
Okay, resolution passes. We do have a need for an executive session tonight under item five ILCS one twenty-two, see eleven, pending remit litigation. We do need to, I need to list some topics. So we do have, do that need, so I need a motion to go into executive session. We have a motion from Alderman Prue, is there a second? Second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Roll call?
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford. Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall. Prue. Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to go back into, uh, is there a motion to return to open session? We have a motion from Alderman Navarez, a second from Alderman Prude. Roll call.
Brown, Jones, Johnson.
Aye.
Capps.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ozenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Fourteen I zero nays.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Uh, item sixteen, sixteen eight.
Um, approve or reject a stay and preliminary settlement agreement in case number twenty CB two three three eight pending before the United States District Court for the Central District of Illinois.
So we do have an action item from executive session. Is there a motion to approve or reject the agreement? Subject to final legal review.
Some of.
We had a motion, is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion to approve from Alderman Marzak. I believe we had a second from Alderman Jones. Okay, so that is a motion to approve a stay and preliminary settlement agreement in case number twenty CB two three three eight, um, subject to final legal review. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Capps.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Ozenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
Fourteen I zero nays.
Okay, uh, action from executive session is approved. Next is item seventeen, city council member comments. Alderwoman Swanson.
Um, just you mentioned that the MC squared, um, energy services, that there's only about twenty five, twenty, twenty-five percent of the residents who are signed up for that energy saving plan. Is there something that goes out to just the people who signed up for it initially, or is there a way to get other people the information who might have missed out on the opportunity to get it?
So what I will do is, yeah, so right now, the only documentation goes out is to the people that are signed up with it currently.
Yeah.
They have opted into the program before. Um, I will talk to them tomorrow. I'm sure we can put out some social media statements and some, um, I do know the press, I think, even asked about it earlier, um, that, about that, so we will, I would say, direct them to the mayor's office at this time, and we'll figure out how they can get signed up for that program if they want to opt in.
Okay, and just one other thing is, um, the weather this weekend was beautiful for Merchant Street. It was a very peaceful event with so many people there, and, um, I didn't know if you were going to talk about the numbers, but I heard Friday night drew in more money at the gate than it ever has for Friday night, and it was, everybody was loving it, and it just was so peaceful and so beautiful.
That's all.
Okay. Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to mention, uh, public, there will be no public safety tomorrow night, and with Larry and I, and I let Larry talk about National Night Out, so he can be the host about, so he would have a better.
Alderman Ozenga.
I'll talk about that. Uh, tomorrow night is National Night Out at Perry Farm. Everybody's invited. It's a real family-oriented event. They have bands, uh, they have free food, uh, police, K-9 demonstration, bound houses, bounce houses. It's a, it's, if you haven't gone, it's a very nice night. It's open to the public. It's at Perry Farm from three thirty to nine o'clock, and there will be fireworks towards the program. Also, we'll be having license and franchise this Thursday at five thirty PM.
And also, Mayor, the reason, the reason for this is because everybody's aware of all the national violence, and I think it's very important for us as a community to bond with other communities, because whatever happened in one community can happen to the next, and Perrone and Bradley are our neighbors, whether you leave it or not, and we need to be part of that when we have council like this, and the police department, fire department, we need a lot of support, not only for our local police, but for, rather, Perrone, uh, Moment, wherever police out there, I mean, as well as the violence department for all of those people, so that we can help these families. So that's the reason I'm, that's the reason I canceled public safety, and I'm very proud to say that I'll be there in support of our local police and fire department.
Alderman Marzak.
I'd just like to bring up the, uh, a few points about, uh, the fortitude that's, uh, been out there. Um, I went around talking to some residents, um, a few of them told me, well, they thought it was a done deal. Um, it's not a done deal. It's not a done deal until the residents, you know, put in their, uh, two cents, whether they want it or not. Um, tonight, we had an individual come here with ninety-five signatures of local, forthward residents against it. You know, fortitude's a need. Um, they had a long fight to get the location that, uh, we all approved. It's unfortunate that we went through, um, a time where building materials for a sheet of plywood went from twenty dollars a sheet to eighty-four dollars a sheet. Um, I was just at Lowe's, it's down to fifty-six dollars a sheet. So I think we better start thinking about maybe, you know, giving them an additional time, or maybe they could do it a rotation again, uh, for this winter, because I do not see, uh, a facility being able to be, you know, completed before winter. So we do have that need for the, the homeless. Um, my thoughts are, you know, within a year's time, you know, maybe plywood and milk, building materials will be cut in, you know, maybe even a third, another half. Um, they might have the opportunity to build, you know, at the location they want, but, uh, I just, I wanted out there that, you know, it's not a, it's not a completed deal, as some people may think it is.
Alderman Jones? Oh. Okay. Alderman Jones.
All right. Thanks, thanks, Mayor. Um, also, I want to echo a couple of things, um, except, well, we had a lot of, we had a lot of the issues going on this month, but I want to really thank our constituents for their fortitude and their strength, and that we, you know, we all stood together. Yes, it was, uh, it was something happened, but I want to really thank the constituents for standing together and for us actually coming together to have ideas about taking care of the situation. I want to thank, uh, DC Chief in your absence. I want to thank him. I want to thank Chief LaRoche, uh, for being with us, State's Attorney Row, County Board Chairman Hunter, and, uh, Commander was there also to, so that we could, and ECDA, where they were there to be able to, you know, discuss a lot of issues that, you know, that needed to be addressed, but I wanted to say we appreciate y'all coming over, and, um, we are standing strong. We're going to be all right. Um, uh, we like, I saw the extra patrols running through our community, and that's a good thing, you know, that when things come up, I like that police and fire are on, on target, dealing with it. Also, I want to thank DPW for the work, the trees removal and things they've done for us, I'm telling you. Uh, I, I might be a pest, but it don't matter. That's part of my job, but I want to thank DPW for coming over and dealing with all that. And I want to thank the city again at large for the support that you gave to B Five Foundation, as well as Dwayne Dean for the violence prevention thing that was this weekend, and it has been a lot going on, and for people to say, we don't care, I got an issue with that, for one. And the second thing is, is there's nothing for children to do. Listen to me. There is plenty for our kids to do with the school district going, with different, um, organizations and churches and, uh, there's a lot for kids to do, but parents, you have to get your kids involved. Don't keep saying there's nothing to do. We got plenty going on for the kids, but they have to get involved, and it starts with the parents. But thanks again for the city. I mean, we, we, we came out of it strong. From Juneteenth, it was great, and then all the way, we roll into, uh, July, we're looking for a big August to finish up strong with the marches and everything, but I just wanted to say thanks again to everybody. And also, the last thing, and I'm done, uh, with the Francine project and what's going on, thank Neil, uh, Neil and his team for what they're doing. I'm excited. We had a lot of rain come down, and we went, as the rain was pouring down that time, it, it all disappeared. So that's a good sign. Uh, Neil, thank you, all right? If it won't, you would have got a phone call, so I'm just, just let you know the rain disappeared. So it was good, and thank the city council again. I know a million dollars is a big get, but we got it, all right? So we just want to say we appreciate it again, and thank you again, Mayor.
Alderman Crawford.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this one's for Neil. We've been having some constituents asking questions about when we started with the fuel tax project, and then also, uh, third ward, what I think is a great deal that we have in our neighborhood, usually, usually the, all the firsts first, I wouldn't really want to say it, Kennedy, all the side, uh, uh, you, you, the, uh, you, uh, Texas, COVID, uh, the Mormon ever, we, uh, Church, uh, so, uh, I guess that would be, uh, that's right.
Alderman Prude.
I guess I'm kind of on the upside right now, um. What's got on his cap? Who in charge to take care of all of that? Um, you mentioned fourteen months, this administration, and we have more killings in these last fourteen months than we had in a very long time. Um, that's very disturbing to me. Um, this last one really hit close to me. Because I knew that he had been, uh, shot nine times, um, there's a whole lot of, since he came, volunteers for baseball, other things as well, uh, this young man, uh, his son, his mother died from a heart attack. Then just almost lost his father. You know, I haven't heard outcry from the council. And everything that's been going on, but I heard all that, back when they had other industries in there, and no confidence, vote, and all that stuff. Did everybody quieten? And that just disturbed me. Uh, and Eric, uh, you said yourself, when you took over that after a year, you had a plan that things were going to change. Nothing has changed as it has. And I think we need to start with this, because changes is definitely, uh, I asked you back in January, and me and Alderman Marshall, what was your plan, because everything you could run it all this bad, and you said you had a plan to go stop this. Now, I knew all the time, ain't nobody stopping us. Nobody. We got, we got to figure out a better way of doing it. That's what you planned. You said it was going to be happening this summer. Not seeing it. I'm seeing it getting a lot worse. Yeah, in this past month, we didn't have over five, six people killed. We didn't have over nine people shot. That's, that's, that's not getting better, getting worse, and I think it's time we do something. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to talk about the shootings. Obviously, we've had a very difficult summer with the number of shootings increasing. Um, I'm pleased to see, though, on the other hand, lots of community organizations. Tonight, we had a few on the agenda organizing events to try to address that. I think that's a, a part of the response community-wide. I think that's important. Um, also, Alderman Barron and I have a number, we have regular monthly neighborhood meetings, and of course, the police and fire code are always there. We have some coming up in August, on August ninth and eleventh and sixteenth, where we'll have officers from the police department and fire, uh, for shootings and public safety in general will be an important part of that. Um, so I think it's important that we all, uh, do what we can with our neighborhood groups and the community in general to, uh, to do, address this issue because it is a problem and something we need to try to get our arms around the best we can, knowing that it's a very complicated and complex issue. Thank you.
Alderman, Alderman Malone Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo with Alderman Prude, as far as, uh, with all of the shooting in the city of Cankey Key, the, uh, residents really are reaching out, but usually when they reach out to us, we don't know anything about anything that has even happened, just like with the last shooting. It was like people at church the next morning that informed us that a shooting had occurred. It really would help if we would know when some, a shooting or somebody is injured in the city of Cankey Key. It would be helpful if we knew that it had occurred. People might talk to us that won't talk to the police, and we could give them some information, but when we don't know, it just seems like, oh, well, they don't care, but it's not that we don't care, we don't know. So I would really appreciate it if our communication would get better when some, those shootings are occurring in the city of Cankey Key, if the older people would be aware. I don't know if all the Aldermen want to know, but I would like to know, I know Alderman Prude would like to know when it occurs, not the next day or after the journal puts it out. That's it.
Any other Alderman comments? Other person comments? Alderman Ozenga.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I too am disturbed by the, by the homicides that are taking place in this community, but as a former police officer, there's only so much the police can do. If the community doesn't step up and give information to the police, a lot of this stuff is not going to get solved, and I know, we just had a triple homicide over here by Alfina Park. People on the street have to know who is involved in that. I put a deal in the, in the newspapers through Crime Stoppers, I'm on the Crime Stoppers board, and we got one call, one call, Crime Stoppers, and that's anonymous. Anybody can call Crime Stoppers. We don't ever ask their name, and we pay a reward. We got one call on a triple homicide. So until that mentality changes, there's only so much the police can do here. Thank you.
Alderwoman Lewis.
Um, I want to echo what Alderman Prude and Alderwoman Malone Marshall has expressed, and I would like to comment to what Alderman Ozenga just mentioned about someone may know something, someone may not know something on all situations. Yes, I agree that the people need to speak up, but I was informed about a, a post that was put out by our police department, basically, and co-signing all the other police, the local police departments, co-signing, saying that basically, it's the citizens' fault that crime is not being solved or dealt with because they're not speaking up. Until we get a hold on where these guns are coming from, the citizens are not distributing these guns, or till the police figure out where they're coming from and how they're getting into the hands, a fourteen-year-old can get a gun in the city of Cankey Key quicker than they can get a job. That's not the citizens' fault. We pay a police force good money, detectives, to try to figure out something, a plan, but until we figure out how it is so easily accessible to get guns in this city, the, the shootings will not stop. Murders will not stop. This has been my plight for since I've been on council to figure out where are these guns, what we can do about it, can we have a war on guns, the way we have a war on drugs, but it's really disheartened me because, as you said, in previous administrations, even going back to Epstein, that was all the, the, the violence, the big thing, and, and campaigns are being used, but it's starting to feel like fighting crime is just a campaign slogan to win votes instead of actually getting out here and figure out what's going on. We have to ask the questions, why people do not want to talk? Maybe then when we start looking at the root of these things, then maybe we can get to some solutions.
Any other Alderperson comments? Department head comments? Mr. Pigash.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to give you a couple of quick updates, Alderman Crawford, to answer your question, the bid opening for MFT is this Thursday. Um, it'll be, it'll be on the, uh, the next council agenda for approval, so work will likely start at the beginning of September, so. Um, Hobby Avenue, we finally got through acquiring all the easements. That is slated to be on the IDOT letting in September, on September twenty-third. They'll likely issue contracts probably around the first part of November. They'll likely issue contracts probably around the first part of November and we'll get all the materials ordered over the winter and they'll likely start the road construction on that project in the spring. So, in the meantime, utilities are moving their stuff. Aqua's gonna move a water main, so that's gonna happen in the meantime. So Francine Drive, all the concrete work is done. They're gonna be milling next week and hopefully paving right after that. So maybe in about two, two and a half weeks, that project will be wrapping up. So I know the residents have been very patient with us over there. Not an easy project to build because we're reconstructing everyone's driveways, but everyone's been real patient with us over there. East Ridge Drive, they are doing water main lowerings. We've been coordinating with Ricky Rockets and their site plan. There's been a lot of back and forth on that since they've kind of been designing it midstream and I think we got all that stuff figured out. So we're gonna be really getting into that project here in the next month now that TenCo is gonna be finishing up Francine. They'll probably be shifting gears and moving over to East Ridge and really ramping that up here over the next month. North Skylers, everyone has seen is started. R and R's starting that work on the three hundred block on the east side, so they're gonna probably take side by side a block at a time. And that's going well to start as well. And South Skylers is about complete. We have some upgrades we're gonna do to the signals at the River Street intersection and a new cabinet. And then the mayor voiced some concerns about the bridge striping. We're gonna be getting that addressed as well, but other than that, that project's pretty much, pretty much completed, so.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah, since it came up tonight, there's gonna be a public hearing on the proposed fortitude project at Fourth and Jeffrey on August sixteenth, Tuesday night. So if any citizens or anyone's interested in hearing more about that project, that would be the time to come and provide testimony.
Do you see the submission to the clerks to make sure that go to you for the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay. Does the council also want that submission to them? We can email that out if you want. So I'll work with the clerk's office. We'll make sure that the submitted signatures are provided to the planning commission and then we'll also get that out of an email to the council members. Any other department head comments? Okay. Mayor comments or mayor updates? Alderman Prude and everyone has mentioned, you're right. The last thirty days, forty days has been awful, absolutely awful, and I'll take the blame. It's on me, okay? I can't necessarily stop it, but I'll take the blame because I did campaign on what's making a change and it has been, it's why I talked about being angry. I'm angry that I don't get this whole thing of we're gonna settle a dispute by killing somebody else or shooting them. It's just different. I, I don't get that part, but we are implementing several different things, long-term and short-term. There's more announcements that are coming out here shortly. I am very happy that the community is getting involved and stepping up a little bit right now. We did have an arrest. You know, we don't want to make arrests because the tragedy is, is the deaths. The tragedy is young men losing their lives. But I'm also, the police and the detectives are working very diligently and they have made an arrest in the unfortunate murder that happened on Court Street, approximately ten days or weeks ago, actually about ten days ago. Additionally, there's some additional suspects that they have identified in some of the other murders that have happened. But again, there's a lot of work that has to go into it with the state's attorney's office, making sure all the right statistics and everything are there. So you're right, a hundred percent, it has gotten worse and I will take that blame directly. And I will continue each day. I do continue to make it a priority and I'm not happy. As, when a shooting happens, right now, we do notify whoever ward it happens in. With the shooting on Court Street, I did notify the fifth ward and the first ward both because it's right on the border. So I figured we'd notify both Aldermen. But we do reach out to the Aldermen if it happens in their ward. If we want to set up, I'm understanding there's a good app out there that a lot of sports teams use. If we want to set up a text messaging device, so all the council members want to hear about, we can do it. I don't want to text it to fourteen council members because then we're gonna have texts flying back and forth for the next three hours and everybody's phones are gonna be binging. So we gotta set up something where if you responded, it only responds to the person that you sent it to. Right now, I, we send it, I believe Chief Passwater or Deputy Chief Kidwell will send something to the Aldermen. I sometimes duplicate it by sending it to you. I figured to Aldermen, if they're bouncing, bouncing questions back and forth, that's, that's easy to handle. If we want to go to a whole council, we can do that. We'll, we'll set up some app that you can download and we can communicate via text via that app. I have no problem with that. Most often, when it does happen, the police department notifies me if it's one in the morning or it's three in the morning and I get that information. I was, it was Sunday morning when I first heard about the information that happened on Saturday night. I was in church and I found out the same time at church and we tried to get out right away on it because there was media and there was people that want to talk about it. So that's what we worked on right away to try to get some information out, so. But I, if that's what the council is, we'll, we'll start notifying all council members if that's what they want. You can opt in or you can opt out. It's up to you and we'll keep you informed. But I do ask the, the police, if there is a shooting, they usually will notify me by text that there's a shooting. If there is a victim that is hit or there is a death, they call me. Chief Passwater?
So a lot of times, I don't have all the detailed information. I don't bother detectives when they're at the scene. So if it's two o'clock in the morning and they, they hit me with information, I don't bother them until they get done. It could be six, seven o'clock in the morning before I know more about it. It could be eight o'clock before I get more information in because these detectives work four, five hours, go home, take shower, go to sleep for two hours, come back in, and at nine o'clock, eight o'clock in the morning, they all get together and talk about what they did because they're not all together, working together. Somebody's in the hospital, somebody's interviewing suspects, some looking for other people. So they don't have all the information at that time either. As for the last shooting, you know, I understand that everything's on Facebook faster than I can put it out. I'm telling you, there's people listening to Scanner, put stuff out immediately. It's not accurate. I can't do that. I can't give you information. I can't give you a victim's name. That victim's name was robbed tonight, wasn't by the police. Something else about that victim, family members were there, family members know. The information's out on social media. However, there are three or four people who were there that night that have not come to the police department to give a statement. Three or four people know what happened, were out there, have not come to the police department. Our detectives have to hunt them down, just like they would for a suspect. But it's that way for every case. Every witness, we gotta go talk to. Every witness, we gotta go find, we gotta interview, we gotta negotiate to get them in. And it's very draining on these detectives to do this every night for all these cases because we could solve them, that case could have been solved by four o'clock in the morning. But it wasn't because witnesses didn't cooperate, people left the scene, we're still negotiating with some people to try to get them in. With the state's attorney's office, you gotta call them on the phone, negotiate to get these people to come in and talk to us. And it's not being fearful because they put the information out on Facebook or it's all out there, the whole case is out there on Facebook. But to tell the police is two different things. And it's not only the police that don't talk to you, they don't talk to you guys either. Because if, if it's trust issue, then why don't you know? And why aren't you calling me up for information? I, because they don't, they don't tell anybody. We're not in the same group of, of people that they hang out with. That's why they don't tell us what's going on. They don't tell you what's going on either because you guys would call us up and give us that information. It's extremely difficult for these guys to work these cases. And you gotta understand how these, how these shootings happen. It happens on social media, they're instigated on social media, they meet the person, go shoot them. We can't even, we don't even have a motive for it. A lot of times, there isn't even a motive. They shot the individual out in front of, across the street from a gas station. There is no motive. They just saw him there, that's the guy they wanted, shot him. There's no reason for it, they just do it. So those cases are very hard to put together because when there's no motive, put the.
Do you have the motive, Alderman Prude? Over, over beefs, you're right, correct, over beefs.
But we don't know what those motives are because we're not in that same group. If you have information or if your congregation has information, then they need to put that to us. But I have, Alderman, not one time since I've worked here have you ever contacted me with information, provided me with information or even had an officer or get an officer to apply for this job?
This, this is the thing. They all trust me. They, they, now, if you want me to say it, if you want me to state it, that that was homicide after that courthouse. That person told you that they was already killed. So if he got killed, don't go before that law. So a lot of people trust the police to protect them if they come in and testify that they already know that they get killed. That's the biggest problem, that, that they don't trust the police. And if we turn, if they tell us, if we tell them, they still got to go testify. There's opportunity, they still get killed. So that's why this stuff is not happening. Now, when you say they go back to before, but they don't trust the police force that we have right now. You have no confidence in other policemen and there's no confidence in this police department either. And if you want to go back and vote for it, we can say that. It's the truth, they don't trust you guys.
All right, but you know what? Okay, hey, we're gonna, you know what? Everyone had a chance to speak earlier, it's now the mayor's comment, so I'm speaking. I understand, but I'm stopped. You're right, he brought you in, I'm allowing you to speak, Alderman Prude, but everyone else, we're just, we're not gonna go down that path right now. I will say this, like I said, there's more things I will let you know that we're implementing. If you have an idea that you want implemented, okay, I'll be happy to listen to it. So let me know. With that, I do want to talk about Merchant Street Music Fest. It was a successful event. The weather was a big factor in that, obviously, when you have ideal temperatures to bring everybody out. It was a very, as it was mentioned before, I think we had hardly no incidences on Friday night or Saturday. I believe Friday night had over sixty-eight hundred people attend. I believe it's over twelve thousand people for attendance for the two night. That is the largest number of people attending the music fest. Obviously, with that large of a number, that's gonna bring in significant gate sales and other revenues, so we expect that the revenue numbers will probably be the most successful. But the cost of putting on the event has also gone up, just like everything else. A piece of plywood is more expensive, it's more costly to rent a fence, stage gets more costly to rent, labor, everything else. So again, we just tried to break even on it, but it was extremely successful. When we get those numbers, it usually takes them about thirty to forty-five days to really compile everything with cash receipts and credit card receipts and get all the expenses out and bills paid, so. But I do want to give a shout out to probably well over two hundred to three hundred volunteers that do it for free. They live there basically for, they put a lot of time and effort into it six months in advance, but they really basically spend forty-eight hours there making sure that it's an event. And that event was, as I said, we had all kinds of people from all kinds of areas that were getting together. I can, I remember bumping into a couple of people by accident. Everybody was like, "I'm sorry." It's okay, it's the kind of community that we want to be in when everybody can get together and be happy. But we'll get you more information about Merchant Street Music Fest. Speaking with that, I do want to kind of go back. I do want to give some recognition to the state police and to the county law enforcement. They have really stepped up and have offered all resources right now to the city of Kankakee. State police has had a heavy presence in Merchant Street Music Fest and they're having a heavy presence, a presence over in Marycrest trying to help with that there. And they've told us each week that if whatever we need from them, they will step up and help with the city of Kankakee and the same with Kankakee County. They have really stepped up with helping with patrol and I think they need to get some special recognition for that because, and other communities. Bradley has even offered today, they said that whatever we need, they're here for us to help. So we're gonna take them up on that. Speaking of Bradley, as it was mentioned, they have National Night Out tomorrow night. Please attend that. A big thing that they do do is they give a bike giveaway and they buy lots of bikes to give away to the youth. I did talk to the, to the lady that does it. They are still short ten bikes for tomorrow night. I do know, I heard Alderman Marzak has supported the cause. I have stepped up and purchased two bikes. It's a hundred dollars a bike. They are asking, you don't have to pay the bill now, but they're asking for someone to help up to fill those last ten spots. If you want to, let me know. She said we just need a commitment and they'll, they'll buy the bike and they'll invoice later. But they're looking for help on ten more bikes, so. If you want, let me know by tonight and I'll let them know if you want to step up and support that for tomorrow night. With that, we'll get, we'll let people move on. It's the end of my comments, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall, all in favor?
No.
Opposed? Thank you.